For August 17, 2022 to order. A lot of things to think about nationally, locally, et cetera. So we'll have a moment of silence so you can contemplate those thoughts. Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. If you'd lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Brian Krupp, our deputy city clerk, please call the roll for this evening. Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Cornett? Dickman?
Here.
Jobson?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
Ten present, your honor. Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone. I, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the whole, again, like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We are certainly happy you're participating in your city government, but please ask that your participation reflect the common desire that I know we all share, to make Davenport a better place for everyone, especially for the folks in here. Reminder, please put your cellphone on silent or turn it off simply so it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. That's all. If you want to address the council on any specific item that appears on the committee agenda, you're encouraged to do so during that item. Anytime you want to address the council, whether it's at the end for public with business or the agenda item, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. Please address the council as a body and not as any individual, okay? You'll have five minutes to do so. We'd love you to give your name, ward, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please remember the common rules of decorum. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us, and we appreciate everybody coming. Just a simple reminders of a little decorum things, the clapping, the yelling, the cheering, or booing, or whatever particular interest you have, please don't, okay? We want to hear what people say. We respect what people say, and of course, you want to hear what we have to say. So I thank you for participating in your city government. City Administrator, Ms. Spiegel, anything for tonight?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Very good. So we have one public hearing this evening under community development. That'll be led by Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, your honor. I open the public hearing for community development. The public hearing is on the proposed addition to the Davenport 2022 Urban Revitalization Area Plan for the central city and north areas. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp, Alderwoman Lee. So the next item is petition communications. I just have a quick thank you. We continue to have great things going on, whether it's music on Thursdays, or Live at Five at Fridays, or Saturday events, ballgames, all the great stuff that goes on in this city. There's so many volunteers, so many people that participate and help out, whether it's our staff or volunteers just from the community or particular organizations. I just want to continue to thank and show appreciation for everybody that gets involved in doing the stuff. It's just appreciated, and we don't do enough to say thank you. So I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, your honor. Just one thing tonight. We have had a wonderful summer, this summer, with Party in the Park. We've been all over the city of Davenport, and our last Party in the Park will be tomorrow, starting at 5:30, and it'll be at the great Emice Park in First Ward. Hope you can join us for that. If you haven't come, even if it's not your neighborhood park, please join us. We have people that come to almost everyone, and we have a great time. I want to also thank our community partners and all the staff that's worked so hard this summer, but it is, it's going to be, I looked at it, it's going to be about eighty-four degrees tomorrow. The high today was eighty-three, a little bit of overcast, which might be nice, so please, if you can join us, join us tomorrow night, 5:30 to 7:30 at Emice Park for Party in the Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis, our local weather person. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, your honor. I want to draw attention to two absolutely free events this weekend. One of them taking place in our downtowns, the Alternating Currents Film, Comedy, Art, and Music Festival. Whatever type of art you like, it will be available for free in the downtown at various businesses. There is an Alternating Currents app. You can download it and plan your entire weekend. Friday night is going to be family night for me. My kids are particularly interested in the giant purple hands performing under the skybridge called Squonk. And then Saturday, my wife and I are going to come down without the kids and try to experience a lot of different concerts. So hope to see you guys downtown, enjoying a lot of different art and music. The second thing is Saturday at Fejuary is Family Fun Day from, I didn't write the time down. Saturday, I think late morning, early afternoon, three hours. The first 100 people to show up to Fejuary get free school supplies, and there's games and activities for anybody who shows up. That's a really good time back to school, both completely free events. Noon to three is the time. Thank you, Mr. Krupp.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Jobson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things, as Alderman Gripp mentioned, school's starting pretty soon. Yesterday at management update meeting, our city administrator, Ms. Spiegel, made mention of this, and my colleague to the right has made mention throughout the summer about traffic and speeding. So we just want to draw everybody's attention that school's in session for most of Davenport starting Tuesday, the 23rd. I know Davenport assumption starts tomorrow, so adhere to speed zones during school hours. Please be aware of kids walking about so we can avoid any tragedies there. Second, I want to give just a little shout out to Southeast Little League that begins their Little League World Series venture tomorrow. I don't know the time of first pitch for them, but wish them well, having a son that played through that Little League also. Alderman Gripp has coached there and has sons that have played through. We wish them well. And then third, Alderman Kelly made mention last week of our school supply drive that we're doing. We're going to be getting together Sunday, August 28th, from 3:00 to 6:00 at Studio 7 Salon on 2902 Middle Road in Davenport. If you'd wish to provide some supplies for that drive, feel free to reach out to Alderman Kelly or myself, or if you're inclined to order supplies online, just have them delivered straight to the studio. They'll take care of them, and then we can hand those out, and anything not handed out that day, we'll look to move on down the road to McKinley. So kids that may have not gotten what they needed for the start of school, have them for the school year. Thank you very much. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you, your honor. Two things. One is Quad City Symphony Orchestra down at the Band Shell, Elton John, should be great. And another thing is, I've got some questions on something we talked about, well, we didn't talk about it, but it's related to the railroad agreement. And I understand that we purchased some land down by Concord to help with the overpass that's tied to that agreement. So I was told we voted on it, and it didn't sound familiar. So I found out when it was voted on, which was July 13th. And so I looked up the site, and Brian, could you put the map up? It's down by Concord, and we paid, and City Council agreed, the other one, please. We paid $165,000 for that piece of land down there. In the assessors page, it's worth 10-4. And I'm trying to get some information. Oh, and plus, we had to buy, we had to pay all the closing fees, the environmental inspection, and I'm not clear, but the taxes were between the buyer and the owner. So I'm trying to find out why we bought some land in the floodplain, and that does flood according to the city inundation map at about 14 feet. So why did we buy a piece of land that was worth 10-4 for $165,000?
Your honor, if I could, I think I can answer that.
Please.
Usually, we don't have questions like that raised at this time.
Yeah, we usually don't do a lot of dialogue, but go ahead if you want to.
Thank you. Well, as Alderman Lee said, the matter came before the council. It was a one-cycle item. It was in the background what we were doing with the property. This went through several layers of review. There's more surprising sales in that area, high-dollar sales. A lot of them are to nonprofit groups, conservation groups, and that tended to drive up the price in the area. So the assessed value really was not reflective of the market value in that area, and that's not all that surprising. Rarely does a piece of property sell for its assessed value.
And I understand that that's common. The other high-value places down there generally have businesses on them. There's structures and businesses, and one of them's worth $300,000. I saw that in the assessment, but that's because there's a business on it. So my question was, in the agreement, there was an attachment A, but it wasn't attached. How can I get a copy of the design of the overpass that is related to that piece of property?
Please.
Thank you, your honor. Again, this is a little bit unusual, but attachments aren't always with those.
This will be the last question.
Yeah, and we, it's not surprising that they come along later. I believe you were sent a copy of that attachment yesterday, and what it is.
I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
And what it was always going to be is a depiction on a map of roughly where the overpass was going to run, and so that's all pending. It's conceptual, and it's pending the grants middle. Thank you.
Okay, and that's my last?
If it's the same, if you have something different, please do something different.
Well, it's related to the walk.
Then we'll get with staff, and we don't do back and forth like this in petitions, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Thayer. Well, I'll break the ice. In Iowa, don't eat the yellow snow, okay? So I want to thank all my colleagues, because I think it's interesting, it's been an interesting eight months for me, so you guys will hear a lot more from me now that I have my fittings. So it's interesting to see that the church house is full tonight, so I want to thank you folks for coming out this evening as well. So I'm just saying thank you. And you know me, Alderman Kelly, the fifth ward. I'm all over the city, but hey, fifth ward Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Dunn?
Thank you, your honor. I just want to let folks know that I'll be having a board meeting this weekend, this Saturday at 10 o'clock at the Roosevelt Community Center. The topic will be the conversion of one ways to two ways, and it is a free event, so anybody's welcome to come.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Anyone else? All right, thank you, everyone. Good. All right, we have four areas to discuss tonight. Remember, committee of the whole, we don't vote on stuff tonight, although we do, we can ask to suspend the rules when you see that at the end. This is a discussion night. To vote for particular items, either they go on discussion, just so everybody knows, and we'll discuss them individually again next week if the council so decides that that's where they go, or they go on consent, and then we do them as a group. So just so people are here, if you're not understanding how we do stuff, tonight is the discussion stuff, hearing from the public, and then the council interacting, and then it either goes to discussion or goes to consent. Next week, any particular item that's on discussion will be dealt with individually, and the rest will be dealt with as a group, just so we're tracking, because I, couple calls today, and it's like, we're not voting tonight, so just on a particular issue that I think people are interested in tonight. So first area to be discussed is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, your honor. We have two items on our community development agenda this evening. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case ROW 22-04, being the request of Sean Struck to vacate unimproved Alley Rightofway located west of 2727 Glassbell Street. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of vacated, unimproved Rightofway lying west of Elmore Avenue and south of Pheasant Creek. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Alderwoman Lee, would you please set our agenda?
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. I move that items one and two be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That concludes community development, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp, Alderwoman Lee. Next area is public safety. Alderman Jobson and Alderwoman Dickman will discuss. Alderman Jobson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one on the public safety agenda is a third consideration ordinance amending Chapter 9.08 entitled disorderly conduct of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by repealing Sections 9.08.050 and 9.08.080 due to a recent trend in federal court decisions restricting the city's ability to regulate activities that involve person-to-person donation requests. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, a first consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7, No Parking of Chapter 10.96 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding Bush Avenue along the east side from Middle Road south to the alley. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on, and the reason we're all here tonight. Item number three, first consideration ordinance amending Chapter 10.96 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa entitled Schedules by Making Various Changes to Schedules 2, 5, and 14 to Implement a Change in Traffic Flow for Third and Fourth Streets Between River Drive and Marquette Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? If so, please step to the lectern, state your name, ward, or address, or where you're from, if not from Davenport.
And Alderman Jobson, if I could just say one thing. It's helpful, folks, and thank you for doing that, Mr. Dushette. If there's other people that want to talk, if you'd be kind enough, just have one more stand up, the next so Alderman Jobson knows more people want to talk. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bruce Gocher from Davenport, Iowa. I'm in the Third Ward. I own Sweet Delight Ice Cream. I own Gocher Towing. I got a couple properties on the one ways. Basically, I heard of this, what was coming up, and I'm not too pleased with it myself. Pretty much a safety hazard, and I think this has come up before myself. I think it's a very poor idea. It's going to be a lot of problems, a lot of wrecks. I should be wanting that for my towing service. I always need the extra money, because I am in that business. But I did take up a petition at my ice cream store and several, I got, I think, 2,000 I brought with me today of people. I made each and every one of you a copy. There's some pretty influential people on there that signed it, a lot of police officers, a lot of city workers, not just in the Third Ward, basically all over the city. And of all the people I spoke with, I found two people that was in favor of it. So basically, that's all I got to say, and that's what I'm here for. And if you want a copy of that, I can give each and every one of you a copy. I made a copy for you, and that's about it.
If you'd like to hand the petitions to our city clerk?
The ones on top, I haven't made another copy of. I can pick up another thousand I got out. I was working late today, so that'd be about 3,000 people I'll have.
Are you finished, sir?
All done.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next step to the podium. Name, order, address, please.
Yes, my name's Donald Dusset. I'm resident of Davenport, I think, believe the Sixth Ward, 123 McClellan Boulevard? No? I'm sorry. I guess I, I was, I guess I, I hope that doesn't discount anything I have to say. I am talking to the whole, to the whole. Nonetheless, also recently retiring as the chancellor of the Eastern Iowa Community Colleges. Our headquarters are downtown, as you know. We've recently, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know what makes great cities, lived in a few, and great communities depend upon great downtowns. It's just one of those things that is axiomatic in place-making and community development. Our downtown is key to attracting talent because of the amenities that they bring to, attracting talent, because that's where the amenities that attract young people and talent live and want to live. We need to do everything we can to strengthen downtown in order to make the city the city that we want it to be. Let's see, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I do understand what makes great cities. Our $30 million investment in downtown took two vacant bank buildings and turned it into a gleaming place that attracts students and people, where we develop talent and educate the next generation. And I really think that this, that this two-way street proposal has been demonstrated in communities across the country. Cities that have taken the lead and making their downtowns great by taking one ways and turning them into two ways have always prospered. Those downtowns have prospered. The downtowns were hit by both the pandemic, the downtown businesses were hit by both the pandemic and the flood, and they need the assistance that two-way streets will provide. And so if you want to have a great city, you have to have a great downtown. Two-way streets will make a much better downtown. It's proven every place in the country. I know what makes cities, not a traffic engineer, but I know what makes cities great. And so I would like you to support that proposal.
Thank you. Please step up to the podium. Name, order, address.
Hi, my name is Dan Bush. I'm a downtown business owner. My partners and I own three downtown businesses, Analog Arcade Bar, Armored Gardens, and Devon's Complaint Department. My partner, Rich Cooksey, and I also own three downtown buildings at 304 East Third, 308 East Third, and 315 Pershing Avenue. We have been asked many times by developers to put our concepts uptown, but have never seriously entertained it, because the mission of our company is to build up our areas downtowns. This isn't the most sound business decision. Uptown has nice new buildings that are easier to renovate, lots of traffic, parking lots, and areas that don't flood. But we don't want to be uptown, because every city our size in America has a 53rd Street. We opened up businesses right here because a city is judged by the strength of its downtown. The cities with vibrant downtowns are considered to be flourishing, and the cities with downtowns that are rundown are seen as dying. Our town used to be seen that way. When I moved back from college in 2006, we went out of our way to avoid downtown Davenport. Now it is one of the region's biggest draws, and this is because of you, the city council, the city administration, and the Chamber of Commerce. Your efforts have made this downtown what it is, and it is truly something to be proud of. And people are taking notice, both locally and from outside the area. Demand for apartments are causing new high-rises to be built, and the amount of foot traffic continues to increase. It is the fastest-growing neighborhood in Davenport, and a flourishing downtown is the number-one attraction and retention tool for young people. Let me repeat that. A great downtown is the number-one attraction and retention tool for young people. That is because millennials and Gen Z are seeking out urban settings with lots of amenities in spaces they can afford. And downtown Davenport is that place. But to get to that next level, it has to be easily walkable, bikeable, and livable. And one ways are not conducive to the urban lifestyle. When one ways cause frequent accidents, when they make it uncomfortable to walk or bike because cars are whizzing behind you, making you feel unsafe, it inhibits growth. I think it is important to talk about is really driving this decision. This is not about money. This project is a relatively small one in comparison to what is happening at this moment on 53rd Street. That project is costing the city millions more, yet was easily passed by council. Also, there isn't a debate among experts. The studies that the city itself have ordered have supported the two-way transition. Additionally, there are over 70 cities who have already done this, and they are reporting overwhelmingly positive results. This comes down to one simple decision. Does the city want to invest in their fastest-growing neighborhood and build it for the future as just that, a neighborhood? Or do we want to continue to treat downtown as a pass-through? To the opposition who claim that this is just a few downtown business owners who are pushing this for their own financial benefit, you are partially right. This will financially benefit businesses, because this change will cause more people to visit. That is why the chamber has pushed so hard for this. This will cause us to generate more sales tax. This will cause empty storefronts to be filled, which will increase property values. This will spur on more development for homes and hotels. This project is not a sunk cost. It is a project that will generate more money for the city throughout, through sales, property, and hotel taxes. So I want to thank the opposition for making that distinction. Where the opposition is wrong, however, is that downtown business owners are not the only ones pushing for this. My hope, and the hope of many others, is that you will see downtown for what it is becoming, a place to attract and retain people looking for a comfortable, affordable, urban lifestyle, and two-way streets will help make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address, please.
Good evening, council. I'm Molly Aden Carlson. I live in the Sixth Ward, but I am the executive director of the Hilltop Campus Village, which touches a bit of the Fourth Ward, the Third Ward, and the Fifth Ward. For those in the room unfamiliar, we're the economic development arm that stretches from St. Ambrose down to Fifth Street in Davenport, and it encompasses all of Brady, Main, and Harrison. We too have one ways, as you're well aware, but we are the gateway to downtown. I'm here to support the two-way streets downtown. I know you've all seen the data and surveys, and to me, the decision is clear. We may disagree on the details, such as maybe bike lanes and other details, but the data shows two ways are a positive piece of the downtown puzzle. Number one, they're definitely safer. When there are more than two lanes going in one direction of one-way traffic, the fastest car decides the speed. But on the two-way streets, the slowest determines the speed. Faster speeds obviously increase accidents. Number two, it's just good business, as you've already heard early on this evening. If you're considered a pass-through, your wallet passes through as well. People really want a neighborhood, not a drive-thru. Number three, it's good for the city and for property values. Property values across the country are higher in value than their one-way counterparts. We all want homes and businesses with a higher value and better tax values. Last, but certainly not least, crime. There's less ability for a high-speed getaway. High speeds increase danger to a very dangerous level. That means for other travelers on the road and our children. Thank you so much for your time today, and I support the two ways.
Thank you. Please step to the lectern. Name, order, address, please.
Hello, I'm Nick Cox. I am the general manager of Hotel Blacklock, the current Iowa, and I also oversee 134 apartments in the downtown area off of, excuse me, off of Brady Street, Fourth, and Third. I'm here today to say that I agree with the two-way streets. I believe that for safety reasons of our residents as well as our guests staying in our hotels, it will help impact safer availability for them while they're taking advantage of all of the downtown has to offer. I also think that as a guest standpoint from our customers staying in our hotels, one of the major complaints we continuously get is drag racing. I believe that that, in my opinion, is, you know, we see that on one-way streets a lot because you can go faster, you know? It's, you've got everybody going in one direction, and I think that it's a little bit different if you obviously separate it out into two ways. So I am for this, and I think that it also helps drive more business down here as being the two hotels, being two of the hotels down here, bringing more people in with more businesses, more storefronts is the way to go, and I think that this can help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Hi, my name is Bill Sheeter. I own several properties downtown Davenport and also some developments that we're working on in those properties. One of them currently is a toasted restaurant. We developed that building that hadn't been touched for over 15 years. I can tell you that in the, that was my first commercial purchase in the downtown area several years ago, and since then, working with the DDP, several close friends and business partners of mine. And since then, working with the DDP, several close friends and business partners of mine, and, you know, a lot of people in the downtown area that I know, you know, we've picked up a lot more projects, and all those projects are for development. And you, you guys will see in the future, a few of these corners, not only when we finish the development, will have benefit to downtown, and they have also started to attract some other developments that are going to happen that are very exciting for some other people. You know, one being close to the Arsenal Bridge, one being close to the Centennial Bridge. The point I'm making is, the first purchase that I made, and the first development that we did for toasted was, one of the main reasons was I had a conversation with Kyle Carter, and it was discussion because of these two ways. You know, I, you don't have to go over the, all the research and all the hard work that's been done in the past few years by Kyle and by the DDP and a lot of, a lot of people and a lot of money spent. It's pretty common sense to me. But that was one of the main reasons I pulled the trigger on my first purchase down here, which has steamrolled into some very, very good opportunities and things that are going to benefit this downtown area. It was that big of a deal to me back then, and it's even more so prevalent now. Safety, prosperity, visibility, it's not about business owners. Like Dave said, he said it perfect. You know, if business owners downtown are successful, that these people are coming downtown to shop, people are coming downtown to spend their money, people are paying attention to your downtown area, which is what we spend how much money on every single year. So it's pretty, it's a pretty easy choice to me, especially if you notice all the people that have done so much for this downtown area and put so much time and work into it. You know, they didn't do that because they wanted to just slip this in. It was, it's a very, a very big deal. So please take that into consideration and hold my point of view to where it should be because I, I'm very passionate about this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address, please.
My name is Jamie Lacondro. I'm a small business owner. My office is next door at Executive Square. I think the people that were before me that are pro-two-way streets said it more eloquently than I could, and I think they've already made really good points, very succinctly. I just wanted to do my best to just come up with a phrase that maybe we could all think about, that sort of try to encapsulate all of it as quickly as possible. So I do think one-way streets could save you 30 seconds off your day, but I think two-way streets could save somebody's life or somebody's small business. And I think making those a priority is something that we all need to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Hello, everyone. My name is Libby Mills. I live on 246 West Third Street. I think we should change these one ways into two ways, make downtown Davenport safer. And by changing the roads into two ways, I'd feel safer crossing the roads and also driving on them. People carelessly speed from left to right without checking their surroundings, causing substantial danger to drivers and pedestrians. Not only would it be safer, it would increase business revenue by making it easier to locate and see local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
My name's Austin Blankenship. I'm from St. Louis, Missouri. I'm here on behalf of Amy and Amort Gill, that own Hotel Blackhawk and the current Iowa as well as four apartment buildings. The, we are in support of the two-way. We want to see downtown become a safer area. Like Nick mentioned, we do get a lot of feedback from guests coming to visit the area, staying at the hotels, and the one ways cause confusion to them, especially trying to navigate and have to circle the entire block to go visit another business in downtown. So we just want to share our support for this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Good evening. My name is Chris Ryder. I live in the seventh ward. My husband and I own two businesses. One is in the fourth ward up on the hilltop. It's a donut shop. And the other is 221, well, we own the building downtown, 221 East Second Street. We moved downtown with our real estate company prior to the flood, and so I'd like to speak in favor of the two ways for a few different reasons. One, because the flood. It was kind of a nightmare, and hopefully we don't ever have to relive it again, but getting around during floods and construction is horrible. So I think that the two ways will work beneficial to that. I have two daughters in their twenties, early twenties. They're downtown often with a lot of their friends. A lot of their friends have relocated downtown. I love this. I love that they're becoming downtown favorites. The urban development that we have going on here, I think, is huge. I am concerned with their safety. There's a lot we've heard tonight. I totally agree with the drag races, the safety of these kids. I think that's important. Travel, I love to travel. I'm a firm believer in every downtown I go to, the two ways make it so much easier. My husband and I come downtown often for things like going on this weekend, the alternating currents. We run into strangers in our city, asking for directions, how we get around. You know, people are very confused. Up on top of the hilltop with the donut shop, people are up there looking how to get around downtown, asking questions. We have some great colleges here in our community. We have some great downtowns in the Quad Cities. I feel downtown is a very vibrant downtown. I feel it's growing, and I think we just need to support it and go forward with this. Change is difficult, we all know that, but change can be good. So please consider the two-way conversion. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
I'm Dwight Holmes-Ben, first ward. I'm 64 years old. I've lived in Davenport my whole life, paid a lot of taxes to live here, and everybody keeps talking about how great downtown has prospered. It's prospered while we've had one ways. If we go the two ways, you're going to have slow traffic, you're going to create road rage, and you're going to create more pollution, lung problems downtown. We're supposed to be doing where we're not creating our carbon footprint larger than it is, and we're going to go backwards and create the carbon footprint more. Has anybody done any studies on how much pollution we're going to create downtown by backing the traffic up? Now, the studies from everybody is great, that's fantastic, but nobody's done the studies when all the trucks pull up to stop to service all the businesses downtown. You're not allowed for anything for that. The roads are not a lot wide enough for that to happen. You need 55-foot minimum. You don't have that all the way. So you're violating your own codes. You're going to have a lot more chances for head-on accidents. Right now, we have none. I keep hearing everybody talking about all these cars flying down the one ways. I come downtown a couple of times a week. I have not seen one do that yet. Now granted, when I was in high school, I did. You know, it was that way. The one ways were that way. But we've got a great police force that now takes care of that. We don't have it. I have not witnessed it myself. Do some people speed a little bit? I don't care what the speed limit is, they're going to do what they want to do. With the current shootings that we have in this city and everywhere else, what are you going to do when everybody's compacted into one lane each way, and now you got to fall out somewhere in the city and the police or fire, and everybody needs to get there? It's not going to happen. You're going to cause somebody's life to have to go wrong because they can't get the support they need, that we all pay for. You need to continue, consider those items, not just selfish items because the business's owners want this because it's better for them. A lot of these people that are down there that is business, they're going to be here today, they'll be gone in five to 10 years. Somebody else will be there, or they won't be there. Same way with the people that are residents of the apartments and stuff down there. They're going to be there for a while. They're not going to be there their whole life. And we're going to cater everything to a few people in short to many that have paid for everything. I think we need to take a long look at what's going on. Flood times, it's not going to work. Just today, coming down here, turning onto Brady, three lanes are closed. Okay, that's fine. Then you turn onto Fourth Street, and you guys got one and a half lanes blocked off out here. What's going to happen with all this construction? It always goes on. It's nobody's fault. It's life, it's growth, it's the way it is. But we're not going to have a good flow of traffic if we cut everybody down to one lane. Left-hand turners, so many of them can't figure out what the left-hand lane's for. Are they going to be stopping in main traffic, trying to make their turn? Yes, they are. Do they do that today? Yeah, they do it all the time, just drive down River Drive. Well, I think anybody supporting this should have to indemnify the lawsuits that happen as a result of it. We as constituents and residents should not have to pay these costs. It's going to go on, and we don't have a final figure of what this is going to cost. There's no figure to finish it out to the one ways, which is illegal to make that turn by the state standards, and nobody's discussing that. All these things need to be discussed, not just blindsided. Well, I've taken up enough of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
I'm Jim Thompson. I reside at 2604, at this time of year, I reside at 2604 East Fortyth Street in Davenport. I'm here speaking in favor of the two ways. I've been a downtown owner since 1995, and I've supported it from that day forward. And primarily, that's all been because of the safety issues. I had tenants coming out of the parking lots with cars screaming by. So that's why I've been for, for 26, seven years, if my math is correct. Been part of the downtown partnership from the original meeting, I believe. You can see, no offense, mayor, the color of my hair that I've been around for a while. No, thank you. But rather than get into all of the issues which you're all fully aware of, there's two things I'd like you to have foremost in your mind when you think, when you vote next week. Number one is the downtown partnership is paying $700,000 as part of this. That means that that board of 30-some people that are invested into downtown either by its business owners or tenants strongly believe in this. And frankly, we all know Kyle isn't, is too tight to get that kind of money up. The other thing that I'd ask you to consider is that Cedar Rapids, Des Moines, Dubuque, Peoria, Muscatine have all done this. Perhaps there's something we ought to consider, maybe they have something going right there. So I urge you, with all of my history here and my support, I happen to own Unimpaired now, I still own the building that me and Billy's is in. What else do I own down here? Kyle? The United, thank you, Ron. The United Cigar Building. So I've always been a downtown Davenport people, and many of you know that. So please consider those things if you would, please. Thanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Betsy Bransgard. I live at 715 North Pine in the third ward. And where I live is just about where the intersection of Pine and Telegraph converges. I live right up the hill from that. So I'm very, very supportive as a West End, long-term West End resident of the conversion to two ways. And I'll tell you primarily because I care about community development and neighborhood restoration. And it's really hard with its configuration right now to look at third or fourth as a neighborhood because they have a speedway going right between them. I think it would be much, much safer for residents, and frankly, I think it, in the current configuration, we're undervaluing the residential property on both those corridors. I think we have an opportunity to see them revitalized. In the current configuration, I don't see how that's possible. I don't see any opportunity there. Whereas if we were to do, do the conversion, I think it's got a lot of potential. I know when these, it feels like I've been around this discussion for 30 years. Like Jim, I've read the studies and been around this discussion, have talked in favor of it before when it was really about downtown. But those efforts failed in other years for one of many reasons, either there was no money, there was no political will, there was no leadership. You've got the money. I'm asking you to come up with the political will to make change and to act and to lead the city into the next iteration of community development.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm Jason Gordon. I live in the third ward in downtown Davenport. I actually have kind of a unique situation. My work is out in what would be considered the burbs, so when I go to work, I go out, and then when I come home, I come back downtown, which is kind of a unique, I think, situation concerning the, you know, the conversation that we're having. One thing that I think is maybe being lost a little bit in, in some of the discussions about this issue is that a lot of why this discussion is so robust and so strong is because of the financial standing of the, of the city right now, right? No matter where you go, if this goes to Marquette or even further, whatever you decide, I don't think it amounts to one-half, 1% of your overall budget. You hasn't been fiscally prudent, you've made fiscally sound decisions. Your investment in infrastructure, both on the sewer and the street site, is as high both percentage-wise of the CIP and dollar amount-wise, probably in the history of the city. So this isn't an either-or conversation, and I thank you for giving us the, the situation we have financially as, as a city, that this isn't an either-or discussion. This is a yes and this discussion because of the good work you've done as stewards of the city tax dollars. Another aspect that I think has been mentioned but should be reinforced is the flood resiliency plan that you all invested a fair amount of money in to have a reputable engineer firm build for you, and that is being implemented right now, I believe, in some projects that are going out to bid that have engineering and design underway. List has as a pretty significant component, maybe not the most significant component or even the biggest, but the fact that Fourth Street becomes your connector to keep the east-west connection available and open in the event that River Drive is, is closed because of a flooding event. And so I think that's pretty significant. There's some, there's language in that flood resiliency plan that I think is relevant and important to this discussion. This, this conversion would serve another purpose in, in the horrible event that we have River Drive closed because of a flood. And finally, I know it's been mentioned once before, I think the fact that you have a, a local entity, a private entity, willing to give $70,000 of their own money to this. And this isn't, this isn't like an Amazon situation where the private entity is giving money because they have to make the connections to a, a business that they want to build. This is an entity that personally and, and individually will get nothing out of this directly. The downtown members that are part of the, the board of directors that was referenced, who voted to support this with cash, feel that they will benefit. But that, I think that's a unique situation. You've got a federal grant that's going to pay for this, a good chunk of this, and you've got $700,000 in commitment from a private entity because they are so committed to seeing this happen. I think that's a, a unique partnership, one that should be valued, and I would just urge your support as a downtown resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Hi, I'm Olivia Warren. I live at 401 Brady Street in the Forest Block Apartment Building, just down the street. And I am a young professional. I'm 22 years old, and I just moved here from Iowa City. I'm from Dubuque originally, so two towns mentioned that also have two-way streets in their downtown, and it is something that I have fallen in love with and is a reason why I always live downtown. What I've heard so far tonight is many people have lived here for years in Davenport, and it's been growing inside them that they're fed up with the, with the one-way streets. I've been here two months, and I'm already frustrated with them. I walk to work, I live down here, and I, I, I work, live, and play. I shop down here. Everything that I do, I walk to it for exactly environmental reasons. I don't want to drive a car. I do not want to leave a carbon footprint. I use a car very minimally, and that's why I live downtown and is the reason why I will continue to live downtown. So I am in favor of these two-way streets for multiple reasons that have already been spoken here tonight. Main one definitely is, is traffic calming. Right when I walk outside my building, I have to wait to see if the wave of cars that are going way too fast have passed already, so I know that I am safe to continue on my route. It's really annoying when I park, if I do park coming back from grocery shopping, and I have to time myself or see the timing I have to make sure I get on my car fast enough so that the cars don't come right towards me and could trample over me because they're not looking exactly at, you know, the person in front of them, but more so is if the, if the light will give them enough time to speed right through. So multiple of the reasons why I'm-
Excuse me, sorry, pardon. Please, please be respectful of those at the podium. Keep your comments to yourself.
Thank you, all of you. Yep. If someone's talking here, nobody else talk, please.
But yes, I am in favor of the two-way streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Hi, Carlton Wills, 1828 Dixwell Street, Third Ward. I've run for office. I feel sorry for everybody that's up here that has to make this vote. But when I got interviewed by the chamber and by the newspaper, they all asked me the same question. How do you feel about the one ways to two ways? How do you feel about the one ways to two ways? And that was one of the big questions down there. So this has been going on for years and years, and I'm here. Mr. Goacher had 2,000 signatures, and a lot of people didn't want to come down here and talk about this. So the whole idea of this one ways to two ways, we had three meetings, public meetings and things like that. There was a lot of questions that were asked. The safety, pulling the fire truck out, are they gonna be able to get through to go east, west, everything else? I don't see anyone addressing the fire station problem. Then we talked about the loading zones, things like that. So I've gone to a couple other meetings about this and everything else. You don't have a lot of room down there to make loading zones, bus stops, things like that. So the idea of moving traffic was why they went to the one ways. The businesses were still down there. You had them down there for years. So I guess the whole thing is, is what are you gonna do with the snow when that comes in? No one's addressed any of that. But as things go, we usually don't think about the other stuff until it happens. But I would like to see the money not spent down there. I realize that they're putting in $700,000, but I was under the impression it was $70,000 for ten years. So I don't know what kind of information everybody's putting out there and everything, but I'm not seeing a lot of it for a positive. But 2,000 people signed petitions, and that's just the start. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for making time to listen to us tonight. My name is Ken Crokin. I am a long-term resident of the Sixth Ward and even a longer-term supporter of the two-way conversion. I'll try not to be redundant. So many very articulate people have already spoken about the safety issues. I'd like to focus more on the softer aspects of this, the sense of place that our downtown lacks at this point. I think it sends an unfortunate message to visitors to this community that we have constructed a downtown that it is really easy to get out of. I would like to send a different message that communicates how many vital, important businesses we have to offer. The future of retail and hospitality is returning to downtown. North Park Mall is a really lonely place these days, if you've not had the opportunity to go there. But our downtowns, not just Davenport, but all of our downtowns, are benefiting from a resurgence of interest. Maybe some of you had a similar experience, but how many years ago was it when all of a sudden we had to drive north on Harrison and south on Brady? Well, it was like going to a different town. I mean, you saw things you never knew were there or understood and often came back to visit later because it was revealing that these opportunities were there. Again, I want to send a message to people who come to Davenport that our downtown is vital and important and deserves to add thirty seconds to your commute to make that worthwhile. Why do I want that? Well, because I love my hometown. But I also like that because our downtown is the economic engine of our city. And the opportunity for it to grow and increase its contribution to community life means my Sixth Ward property taxes will suffer less pressure. I want that for all of us and for me. Thank you for your time and listening to us tonight.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Hi, my name's Holly Griffith. I live at the corner of Fourth and Brady and Forest Block. And I just wanted to remind the council that downtown is also a place for children. I pay a healthy amount of rent to live at the corner of Fourth and Brady. And I do have a firsthand show of vehicles racing at speeds in excess of 80 miles per hour without concern. I live right, you know, at ground zero where the drag racing is happening. So there are families downtown, working families, supporting housing and urban growth and raising their children. And I put it to the council to defend the apathy for enforcing the law against felonious drivers who know they have carte blanche to break the law without repercussions due to the built-in drag strip. When if it happened in any other residential area, it would be addressed post haste. The two-way street is a perfect way to address this aspect of my concern just as a mother. I work and live downtown. I do everything downtown. My office is downtown. Aside from businesses, you know, this is a community and my home, and it doesn't feel like a safe neighborhood. It's a neighborhood. I have three teenagers, and so I do have access to common chat among groups of kids. And, you know, one of these drag racers, I found, yeah, I found one of these drag racers in my house one night, associated with one of my children. And I heard him bragging about the speeds they get up to, you know, 120-plus miles per hour going up Brady. When I asked him, I said, you know, what if you get in trouble? What if you hit somebody? What if you kill somebody? What if you get arrested? He said, and I quote, "They don't care and they can't catch us." I will say that my day job is as a senior injury adjuster for a major insurance company, and my job is to evaluate the risk of reckless drivers pre-litigation and settle serious and fatal injuries. My job is also to evaluate rules of the road, liability, and see trends and patterns. Watching a serious and potentially fatal offense happen multiple times every day in my neighborhood where I'm raising children without being addressed on the doorstep of my home feels like a personal affront. I believe the two-way is a good start to a safer neighborhood and a more robust community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
My name is Dennis Horzell. Lived in Davenport my whole life. Born and raised in Fourth Ward, currently in First Ward. I'm opposing it only for safety reasons. Someone talked about how people are complaining they're getting lost in the city of Davenport. Just think about the people that live here already are gonna be confused, especially the older generations that you have troubles driving as it is. So all I ask is please consider it really hard. I know it's strongly supported tonight by the Davenport Business Association. I feel great for them. Appreciate their businesses here. Like I said, I've been here my whole life. I just don't think it's a very good idea. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Ron Schwager, Davenport, Rock Island, and the Tumblin'. Why, I will look for a new house here in Davenport. I'm opposed. I remember writing the one ways as a teenager. Yes, there's some stupid kids on the one ways. But the cost for this, no one knows for sure. Each intersection, is the lights all gonna have to be changed? Changing the signs, changing the roads so it meets the proper demographics? I've talked to business owners. They don't want it. There's some that don't want it. You have a few. They built here on the one ways. They knew it was a one-way. And now to say, well, this town, this town, this town's doing it. Well, if they built a bridge that goes off into the river, are we going to? It doesn't mean for our specific area it's good. I watched our downtown die as a kid and go out to North Park. Now I'm watching North Park die as it goes out to 53rd. We're trying to bring some of it back downtown. It's a big cycle. The one ways served a purpose back in the late 70s when we got 18 inches of snow. Where do you think the snow went? The two center lanes. I remember that. I was a kid, but you know what? That's something you don't forget. Now, they talk about safety. How does it affect the traffic pattern when people go, well, I ain't doing the two ways. It'll go take longer? That's gonna put different pressure on different roads. Has anyone really even looked into that? Before this, Council, I think you should consider they should have more facts. They should have more studies. What's it gonna cost per intersection to do? What's it gonna cost to fix River Drive and Third and Fourth Street? You're asking the public to support a blank check. There's several thousand that say no, and I'm one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Scott Nicely, 3520 Rockingham Road, First Ward. My businesses are close to the First and the Third Ward. Just really disappointed in the city that nobody's been down there to talk to any of us, to ask us or tell us what's going on or anything. We've had nobody down there. I've talked to all my neighbors, and there's been nobody down there to talk to any of us. But we live in the West End.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Michael Ross, Second Ward. The businesses are wanting this, but why are they only willing to fork out 35 to, you know, 40% of the cost? If they want it, then they should bear the full cost of this. The city shouldn't bear any responsibility on the cost. That should be on them. They want it, they should have paid for it. Now, the $700,000, somebody was saying that it's interest-free. That needs to be brought. Are we just gonna keep writing blank checks? I mean, I'm sure everybody here would like one. I'm not for it. You're gonna have the drag racing, whether it's one ways, two ways, whatever. You're gonna have it. The safety. Again, where's the snow gonna go? Two weeks down in the West End, we're buying a house. That's gonna affect us. Something else that's never been brought up, property tax increases. Is that just gonna, we're gonna pass this and nobody's gonna know a year down the road? I think the council needs to look at a lot of things. When you have 2,000 signatures, that's making a statement. Not everybody can be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Hi, my name is Rachel Anderson. I live in the Third Ward, 624 Scott Street. I moved here in 2019. I came from Des Moines, also one ways. So I work in downtown. I live in downtown. I do everything downtown. I walk to work. I walk down Ribley. I get on Third. If you walk down Brady, if you hit Brady and Third, that's an incredibly dangerous intersection. You wait until, if you've lived here long enough, you wait until you get the stop hand, and then you look for oncoming traffic and you cross. Because if you cross during your right to cross, you're gonna get hit by a car. I've seen it multiple times, cars getting to a stop and people almost getting hit. I see an accident about once a week on the one ways. I saw one last night on Fourth, Fourth and Gaines. Mostly I would just like you to prioritize pedestrians over vehicles. This is a neighborhood. I live just outside of downtown because I wanted the neighborhood feel. And with the one ways, downtown doesn't necessarily feel that way. And with the two ways, I believe that we could get a neighborhood feel that is more pedestrian-friendly.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Hi, I'm Emily Gordon, and I live in downtown Davenport in the Third Ward. I'm a lifelong Davenport resident. I've been in the downtown for six years, which is a choice we made because we are spending a lot of time downtown. I walk in downtown every day. This is my neighborhood. I'm very much in support of making the streets two ways to increase safety and to make it more of a neighborhood. I do sometimes drive downtown too because I do work a little ways away from there. And I was rear-ended by a speeding car on Fourth Street about four years ago. I was stopped at a red light, and there was a car going fast, not paying attention because there's nothing really to watch. Nobody's coming the other way. And so I feel like I have some personal experience. You heard Jason talk a little bit about all of the big picture stuff, but I feel like there's some on-the-ground neighborhood stuff that should be kept in mind as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Good evening. My name's Dale Gilmore, and I live in the Sixth Ward, and I approve this message. I believe it was Will Rogers who said, "My mind is made up. Don't try to confuse me with the facts." I'm gonna take the next 30 seconds to quickly review some of those facts. Traffic speed has been monitored by the DOT and has shown not to be a problem. Number two, Davenport is number one in downtown businesses as a percentage of available opportunities. We're already number one. Number three, the two intersections at River Drive do not meet state minimums and may need to be reconstructed at an additional cost of possibly another million and a half dollars. And number four, according to Davenport's studies, four-way stop sign intersections can give pedestrians a false sense of safety. So again, I ask, can somebody please explain to me why this is such a great idea and what is the true cost? But that's not what I want to talk about tonight. What I want to talk about tonight is politics. It always amazes me when a national politician declares that a certain ruling or law is a threat to our democracy. Now, just in case you didn't take civics in junior high school or were absent that day, we do not live in a democracy. We live in a republic. Remember just a few minutes ago in the Pledge of Legions, the phrase, "And to the republic for which it stands." Now, in the old traditional republic, one person was appointed to represent a group of individuals. Now, we now live in what is defined as a representative republic, where the group of individuals select or elect who they believe best represent the values, principles, ideals of, et cetera, of those people. That's why the 11 of you are sitting up there. You were voted in to represent us. Barbikas wrote in the Quad City Times that an estimated 70% of the people who took the online survey opposed the conversion of one ways to two-way streets. Now, I know that question was not asked directly, but I believe the responses given could easily be interpreted. Some people interpreted the results of the survey to show approval with the listed concerns. Others interpreted the results of the survey to be no because of the listed concerns. You can twist those responses any way you want to justify your own position. I attended all three public forums. The surveys there showed that 73% of those who attended opposed the conversion. The Monroe School at the end of Fourth Street was discussed at that forum. And Dan Gosa stood up, introduced himself, and stated, and anybody of you that were there will know this is a fact, quote, "I wish all schools were on one-way streets." Tonight, when the meeting's over, exit through the front door. You'll see that for the improvements being made to City Hall, both the parking lane and one lane of traffic is blocked. Currently, traffic simply just changes one lane to the left and avoids any congestion. If Fourth Street was two-way, westbound traffic would have to be rerouted to either Third or Fifth. This construction will take weeks, if not months, to complete. And how many similar projects are planned for Third and Fourth Street? Again, I'd like to remind you that you were elected by us to represent our values, principles, and ideals. Now, you're free to vote any way you wish. Thousands have signed petitions in just the last few weeks in opposition to this project. Almost 950 buttons like this one have been requested. Almost 300 bumper stickers have been requested. If you choose to vote to not represent your constituents, I would be willing to bet that the votes of your replacements will represent your constituents.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Hi, my name's Brian Kramer. I am temporarily a resident of Rock Island, but I lived at Fourth and Brady in downtown Davenport. In fact, actually, many of you city councilmen are pretty familiar with me from my time working for Congressman Loebzak. So this has been an issue that you guys, that the city council, the city of Davenport, has kicked down the road for 20 years. Since I have worked in politics, this has been an issue... Since I have worked in politics, this has been an issue that people have brought up every other year, whether it's Brady and Harrison, whether it's Fourth and Third. This has been an issue of going to two ways. As I said, I was a resident of downtown. This, the issue of the one ways was one of the reasons I moved out of downtown and with my girlfriend to Rock Island. Because this time of year, you cannot get any sleep at Fourth and Brady. I was living in the Renwick Building, and all night long, motorcycles, trucks, cars, people revving their engines. Fourth and Brady, besides being the starting line for the bigs, is the starting line for what we now know as the racetrack in downtown Davenport, okay? I encourage the city council to spend time at Fourth and Brady at eight o'clock tomorrow night. It will begin, and it will not let up until about two in the morning. Also, my girlfriend, because of a drag racer, totaled out her car one morning because someone decided to fly down Fourth Street drunk and rammed his car into my girlfriend's vehicle, and then fled on foot, claiming that somebody else was driving his car that night. He doesn't know how the car got there. So, uh, this has been an issue, like I said, for twenty years. I encourage you to vote for two ways. I think it'll be great for the businesses downtown. I think it is a safety issue. I think that this is something that you strongly need to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Nicky. I own a business called Abernathy's located at four-thirty-two West Third Street. We moved from East Second Street to West Third Street. Uh, we just came up on celebrating three years there on the one way. And the most common feedback I get from customers is that they love our business, they love seeing our window displays. But sometimes customers will drive by every day for over up to now three years and have never stopped because it's not conducive. So, customers that I think potentially could, you know, come into our business and encourage us to stay downtown are missing an opportunity, whether it be easy parking, the traffic's going too fast, or they just don't feel so inclined. So, I believe that two-way streets would increase traffic for retail businesses, and I'd love to see us succeed so we can also see fellow retailers join us downtown. Um, the other feedback that I often get is from out-of-town residents that it is confusing. We also get that feedback even from people that just live in Illinois. So, I'm often writing handwritten notes to give people directions, and I just think the two-way streets would create ease for people that live out of town or even just in Illinois. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Hello, Kyle Carter, Fifth Ward, uh, executive director for the Downtown Davenport Partnership, and, uh, local one-way celebrity, apparently. We've been doing this a long time. The right question really isn't, "How fast should traffic move and what direction should it go?" The right questions have been asked tonight about how do we create greater economic growth? How do we improve our quality of life for Davenport, not just downtown, but the West End and the neighborhoods attached to it and beyond it? And how do we do that in a way that creates reasonably efficient travel? Which, all eight studies over twenty years by different people at different times have arrived at the conclusion, with city staff and HR Green confirming again two weeks ago that it is in fact very feasible. So, the question about how do we deal with loading zones, how do we deal with snow? That's why we have city staff, and they are more than capable of answering those questions. And I'm sure that we'll be able to deal with those as the other eighty cities across the United States have successfully done since we started talking about this twenty years ago. Ultimately, in our case, the flood issue, as a couple of people have spoken to, is uniquely important here. While I am thrilled about the improvements coming to Third and Fourth at the quarter that will greatly reduce the impact of flooding, it's still not, why would we not want to have more and maximize our options of flexibility when flooding happens? And this adds to that arsenal. Frankly, whether you vote this up or down, Third and Fourth Street at River Drive is dangerous and needs reconfigured, period. This is simply an opportunity to do it while we're also resurfacing Third and Fourth Street and also addressing a corner that needs addressed regardless of where this vote goes. But ultimately, our goal was simply to build an environment that made it more likely for greater success. I am very aware that we have built the success of this downtown in the current configuration. And the mayor has said it quite well a couple of times, that the sun will rise tomorrow regardless of how this ultimately ends. But we are here to make Davenport the best place it can be, to make downtown the best version of itself. Not a good version, not a version that we did in spite of some challenges that were in front of us, but to seize the opportunity to be the best version of ourselves. And that's what the mission of the Downtown Davenport Partnership is. It is to beautify and enhance the economic growth and beautification of the entire city of Davenport through our investment in downtown, which I firmly believe will extend to the West End. And we are more likely to see development, greater value, and greater impact in our neighboring districts if this happens. So while the sun will rise again, Mayor, you are totally correct about that no matter what. And I appreciate your levity on that, because this has gotten a little crazy. We just want Davenport to be its best, and I think everyone in this room feels that way, one way or the other. Um, so ultimately, this is part of a master plan, in fact, three master plans. We hope that you support this to see that vision through, not just for downtown, but for the growth of Davenport as a whole, and most certainly our adjacent neighborhoods. Thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Hi, I'm Kelly Grubbs. I actually had not intended to talk, but I just, I am from the West End. I own a home in the West End, our business is in the West End. Um, and one thing that I would love the council to think about is, one of the greatest assets we lose on a regular basis are our young people. I have four kids, and every one of them was happy to move away when they graduated from high school. I have one who's come back because downtown is such a cool place to live. He, when he moved back, he moved downtown, he's lived in a couple of places, he loves it. The one thing that's a drawback is the one ways. He lived in the Democrat and talked about how there's no sleep. It's just a drag race, both ways. Whether it's Fourth Street, whether it's going up Brady, and that is a real challenge. When we hear some of these young professionals talk about coming here, moving here, wanting to live downtown, they work downtown, we want, I just think that's such an important part of the growth for our downtown and for our city. Eventually, some of those folks will move out into other wards. But right now, they're part of a really vital downtown, and we should try to grow that. That will advance the entire city if we can grow that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ed McWilliams, uh, I believe I'm in the Second Ward. There's a saying that goes, "If something's not broke, don't fix it, leave it the same." 'Cause if you change the one ways back to the two ways, as you can already tell, there's been a lot of other people that are just not happy about it. So, like I said, if it's not broke, leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
John McDermott, Eighth Ward, uh, twenty-three oh-one East Fifty-Eighth Street. I have my own personal experience on a multiple level. So, I moved back to the area eight and a half years ago. This was not supposed to be home. Grew up in Newark. I was here to help family, was gonna be here for a few years, carry on with my personal and professional careers and move on. Eight years later, you couldn't pull me out of here. I lived downtown for a short bit of time, loved it. I have now invested with a few other business partners, and we've opened, uh, a bar, a music venue. Now, we're adding Airbnbs and continue to expand that footprint for ourselves. I would say, living downtown, Third and Fourth are a nightmare. One, you gotta look both ways still. Doesn't matter if you can put up all the one-way signs. Right now, even on Second Street, as we resurface, we have people going both ways. So, it is not a safe environment for those people who are in a walkable environment. I was just in Cedar Rapids a few nights ago and had dinner. I went to college in Cedar Rapids. It was one ways galore. It was such a breath of fresh air to wander around that downtown and really feel like that was a community. They too went through a flood, utilized that opportunity to grow, make improvements, and do the things to help that downtown flourish. Yes, you can say it's business people who are trying to push this through, yes, but we are also putting our money where our mouth is. I can ask you, any of the businesses on Fifty-Third Street who are getting improved turn lanes and getting through traffic, are they putting their money into this? No, that is all on the full city taxpayer dollars and federal grants. We are investing our time, our energy, and frankly, our lives. Because it's late nights, it's early mornings, it's making sure those sidewalks are clean. You guys have done a fantastic job of putting in new sidewalks, new sewer, new plumbing, making changes so the flood never happens again. I invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into a flooded building because I believe in the improvements and the greater plan that you guys are putting forward, that those things will not happen again. I encourage you to continue to reinvest in us to allow us to flourish, which in turn lowers those property taxes. So, thank you, guys.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Anyone from council? Let's see Alderman Condon.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and for coming today. Thanks for keeping things polite and civil. I know it's also sometimes scary to speak up at the podium, and even myself now, when I push the button, sometimes my soul still leaves my body and I have to find my way. So, um, I'm gonna try to eat the whole elephant here, and I'm gonna ask for your patience. But, um, the last time we had a chance to speak about this, uh, we had an abbreviated amount of time, and I punctuated my point with saying that I knew it in my gut that this was the right thing to do. And maybe, maybe that wasn't the best phrase, but, um, I know it in my heart. You have to make decisions with both your head and your heart. And, and, and don't discount the heart. I'm gonna come back to that. But first, speaking about the process, to summarize how we got here, after a twenty-year push from shareholders within the downtown, uh, again, with them investing their money and their time and investing in their own study, their own studies, the city took on this issue. And, um, in doing so, rightfully so, we invested our own independent survey, and we had a third-party review it. But, really, this was held up to greater scrutiny than any other item that I can remember uh, in my time here on council. And as well as some of my more tenured colleagues, um, have mentioned that this has been a more thorough process than much other more weighty issues. We've had three public meetings, we had a survey, we did an internal traffic study with our own professionals and traffic engineers. Again, we had an independent review from a separate firm, private firm. We had a council work session. Staff made themselves available for one-on-ones, and now we're just now entering the six-week process. This is a controversial issue, I think in part because it's an approachable issue. Again, we've had other much more weighty subjects that we've, um, stepped into, and they don't garner as much public input, um, because they're complex. But somehow, um, everyone drives, and so, um, not to say that the public dialogue is not good, but, um, again, this issue has had to hold itself up to much greater scrutiny. So, for what it's worth, that's where we are. Before I get to the heart again, after the process, we were all faced with the facts. And these are the facts as I know them. The staff, the traffic engineer, were posed with the question, "Can the roads accommodate this conversion? Can the one-way roads accommodate a conversion to two-way roads? Can they handle the traffic count?" And the experts answered, and it was yes, it can accommodate it. We then had the third-party review it. And they said, yes, it can accommodate it. During my one-on-one with staff, I wanted to get more into it. I wanted to know more details. I wanted to scrutinize the data and make sure that if, um, I was gonna be such a big champion for this, um, that I fully understood the nuance of some of the data. There wasn't a lot of nuance to be had. It works comfortably within the margins. And, um, you know, as with every city project, every city project, there'll be hurdles to clear and challenges to overcome, but nothing extraordinary, nothing exceptional, and that was emphasized. This is something that can be done. Council sets policy. We don't design intersections and we don't design roads. So as we, um, continue, uh, from the dais here, to hold this up to greater scrutiny than any other item, I just wanna highlight that, not to overemphasize the point, the experts have said that this works. And to paraphrase, the summary from my sit-down was that it boils down to this. And I remember the phrase, "Well, what do you want the downtown to be when it grows up?" That is the policy question before us. What do you want it to be? Now, don't mistake good planning and scrutinizing for a bad idea. We're gonna discuss nuances of this that involve intersections, parking, and loading zones. But, um, once again, that's what staff does every day. They navigate those hurdles for us. So, is the heart a good way to make a decision? What do we want the downtown to be? Chocolate and vanilla, those are both good choices. You use your head every day to inform your choices. I sell real estate for a living. I can show you a fifteen-hundred-square-foot house that doesn't use the space very well, or I can show you a fifteen-hundred-square-foot house that makes your heart sing. Nobody buys a car strictly because of the functionality. It has to also speak to your heart, except for Aldering Grip. I know you. But that's why we make a good team. He's the brain and I'm the ass. So, the heart is not always a bad way to make a decision. Again, we even do it at the city every single day. Uh, we have to consider when we're speaking to the public, not just what we say, but how we say it. Our accredited Neighborhood Services Department has to take that into consideration. Our Police Department takes that into consideration. And we have to take into account not just what we say, but how we say it when we send out public messages in the face of tragedy or natural disaster. The heart matters. When you're looking at how someone says something, you're listening with your heart. So, what we want our downtown and central city to feel like is not a frivolous question. It's a very, very important one. Now, I'm centering these comments, uh, that I'm about to make around downtown as a location, a destination, an entertainment district, our cultural center, and Davenport's fastest-growing and most diverse neighborhood. Not what you can observe as an occasional visitor with your window rolled down as you pass through. So much of what we have talked about is centered around traffic and not what it's like to actually be downtown. I said in the past, when you're a hammer, everything looks like a nail. And when you're a car, anything that slows you down is dumb. I live downtown and I travel Third Street, and it's not intelligent. It feels like you're going faster, but I think I've put my finger on what it is. It's instant gratification. It's not fast. If it's not fast, it's aggressive. You can always pass somebody. You can always turn left on red. When I drive a car, I'm dumb. But I live downtown, and what we need to start thinking about is what it's like to be downtown. Um, so I do live here. Um, I've lived in downtown for ten years. I moved into the Hotel Blackhawk when it first opened. We built ourselves a home on Third Street, and when I look back at when I invested in that property, it's amazing to see that it had boarded up windows. We've come so far. It's so, you know, when we moved into downtown Davenport, we thought it was thriving, uh, and it continues to thrive. It's amazing how far we've come. And to think how excited we were about the progress that we had even back then. But I just, it's just to say that- But I just, it's just to say that when I make observations about what it's like to be downtown, it's where I lay my head, it's where I walk my dog, it's where my office is, and it's where I've brought four kids home from the hospital. I know downtown. So, downtown is something that all Davenport residents have some ownership in and I'm happy that they take ownership in, but I do get a little bit defensive when they voice their loud opinions, only because I feel like it's one of the only neighborhoods where you can call into question whether or not you feel safe, whether or not it matters and, and we have to take into account opinions from people who admittedly don't come downtown. So, I just qualify that not all discussion being had about the downtown is necessarily being contributed by people who are informed. So, to the people who are contributing to this conversation in a well-meaning way, I'll digress quickly and then get to my point. It was really interesting when we hired a company to design a new logo for the city of Davenport, because they had an observation that was unique to me. Their, their, their main observation was, wow, Davenport is such a diverse city. You can live so many experiences within our city. We have a rural area, suburban, and an urban central city. You can live in a historic home or new construction, there's so many different places to live. And within that city, we have so many areas that take into account traffic over being a pedestrian. Nowhere up on 53rd do those intersections take into account the human scale and what, imagine what it's like to be a pedestrian. And that's not to say that that's a bad part of the city. I visit up there often. But when you're in that part of the city, you feel offended if there's not 20% empty parking spaces within the oversized parking lot. You feel frustrated if there's not an open pump waiting for you at, at the gas station and you're disappointed if there's more than a 10-minute wait for a restaurant. There's no shortage of areas that appeal to what some folks consider modern convenience. My request is that you don't necessarily bring those sensibilities to an area that's unique and unlike any other part of the city. The downtown is important and it appeals to people who prefer to walk rather than drive. They, they value being in a cultural center more than they do modern-day convenience. It's an area that they feel offers them an identity, which is so important to them. Every city in America has a Chipotle. If they don't, I feel sorry for them. Chipotle is wonderful, but that's not what downtown is and that's not why we love it. You know, and these people prefer to support small local businesses rather than big-box retail. Investing in our downtown is a downtown, is a down payment in our future. It speaks to our millennials, as you see so many young faces coming here today. As, as we're able to work remotely, more and more people have the flexibility to choose where they want to live and we're not the only city investing in our downtown. They, they have their choice from literally thousands of affordable, mid-sized cities like our own, who are similarly investing in our downtown and, and we don't wanna be left behind. So, the chamber's been interested and the downtown has been interested in converting these into two ways for 20 years. And so much of our downtown revitalization has been a question of chicken and egg. Do we get residences first or do we get businesses first? And, and how do we revitalize the central part of our city that's so important? And maybe if we did the two-way conversion, that, that would've, we wouldn't have been ready for it yet. But the progress we've made over the last 20 years has been in spite of the one ways, not because of the one ways. And over that 20 years, through a partnership with the city, small business owners, and the downtown partnership, we've built a 20-year track record of spectacular successes. And so many of the things that we partnered on could be considered nice-to-haves. Flower baskets, nicer streetscapes, benches, facade improvements, those can all be considered nice-to-haves, but they're all contributing factors on what makes a space speak to your heart. And based on that 20-year track record of success, based on a willingness to contribute $70,000, $700,000? There we go. Thank you for my math. I think this is plainly the right decision. Please don't try to make downtown conform to what the rest of the city is. It's a, it's a unique area, it's thriving because it is unique. And as contentious as this debate has been, I've really enjoyed all the conversations that I've been having. I'll, I'll, I'll finish on a lighter note. We have Alternating Currents this weekend and I'd love to see you guys down here. Anytime we get visitors down here, it's great because you might tap into something that you just didn't realize was there. Alternating Currents might be like a really good name for this festival because we, we can have a great conversation. And I may have some other comments based about speed and whatnot, and I really am wrapping things up, but I'll, I'll tell you one more thing. I know that I'm unique. I know that I'm the only person, maybe one of the only people raising kids downtown. I know I'm certainly the only person who's expecting our fifth kid and we're not going anywhere. We're living downtown. So, I've been encouraged by many people to bring my personal story to the debate, but as an outlier, I don't know how much that contributes. The other day I was thinking about this and I realized I hadn't been outside, you know, past 11 o'clock or midnight in quite some time. So, I went outside to see what all that noise was about. And in addition to the aggressive traffic, the careless driving, I saw a tremendous amount of people on the sidewalks. That was the type of crowd that we're aspiring to have on our sidewalks every day. The other thing I became acutely aware of is that I wasn't fitting in. It's been a little while since I've been outside and these were kids all around me. So, while my kids may not highlight the issue of safety and, and, and the draw and attraction and importance of downtown, those are somebody's kids and, and their safety matters. They've invested in our community. This is what's gonna keep them in our community. And if you haven't been downtown lately, as you please continue to contribute to this conversation, step up this weekend and, and see what it's all about. There, there'll be a, a lot of hospitality waiting for you and a lot of people willing to have the polite debate. So, thank you for these extended comments.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Alderman Jogan. So, my comments are gonna be twofold. First, I'm going to give you my opinion, which I've stated publicly many times over the years and I'll continue to do it. And then, secondly, I'm gonna answer some questions that I've been getting from folks regarding the conversion. But first off, I wanna thank everybody for coming down to City Hall to voice their opinion. Nothing stirs the blood of Davenporters quite like discussing the direction of our downtown streets. And I appreciate anyone who feels strongly enough about anything to show up to City Hall, to go up to that lectern and to tell the city council what they think. As we go through this discussion, I think it's important to remember that we all love Davenport, we all want what is best for our city and sometimes we disagree, disagree on what's best. So, last night I was trying to get my mind ready for the conversation and I was reading articles from cities across Iowa and across the country of cities who have gone through this exact conversation and made the decision to move forward with converting their downtown one ways back to two ways. The city wants to convert the one ways to two ways so they can slow traffic, safer streets, economic development. There's always a counter group that says this won't work in our downtown, it's too expensive, there results in gridlock. In the last decade, this conversation has happened in 85 cities across the United States, including our counterparts in Des Moines, Cedar Rapids, and Peoria. When the one ways are converted to two ways, the case studies have been very clear. These cities show that traffic slows down, streets become safer for pedestrians and vehicles, crime goes down, and property values go up and traffic congestion is not an issue. We are not trendsetters in two-way conversion. In fact, we're behind the curve of our peer cities. The, the good news is that 85 cities have paved the way for us. They've proved the concept and given us a high confidence that this can be done with great success and few problems. I've been the Chair of Economic Development for about six of the seven years I've been on council. I take the role very seriously. I read books, articles on planning, zoning, development, and cities. I go to conferences and I've attended breakout sessions specifically about one-way to two-way conversion. And I have to tell you, the data on this is very clear. One ways are great at moving traffic, traffic quickly past a downtown, but they're bad for business and they kill downtowns. We don't install one ways anymore as a standard practice, not in Davenport and not in any city across the country. If Third and Fourth Streets were being built as new streets, one-way configuration would not even be considered as an option. So, I'll clearly state my support for the conversion to two ways as I have done publicly for the last six years. The case studies and the data are clear. Two ways are better for business, they're better for neighborhoods, they promote economic growth, they promote placemaking, they're safer for cars and pedestrians, and they reduce crime. Downtown Davenport and Davenport as a whole will be better for having done this. So, that is my position. Here are some frequent questions that I get. And one, one resident said this one specifically. One ways are not broken and they don't need to be fixed. I, I disagree with that assessment and so do many business owners and residents who live on these high-speed one-way streets. This isn't a complaint that is unique to downtown one ways. Ask the business owners on the hilltop, what's your biggest challenge? Traffic speed and noise created by the one ways. Ask Palmer College, what's their biggest challenge? Pedestrian safety on Brady Street will be at the top of their list. Ask residents of the Vanderweer neighborhood and they will tell you that they can't even enjoy their yards because the traffic is so fast and so loud. Look at the struggles we've had to drive economic development on North Brady and North Harrison Street. These are the same complaints we hear regularly from downtown business owners and residents. These are the same economic development challenges we face on Third and Fourth Street. We've been trying to get a national grocer to open up downtown and their answer has been, the demographics are starting to look good, but give us a call when you get rid of the one ways. We're not putting a grocery store on a one-way. National grocery stores are very good at running models. They understand that one ways are bad for business. The next question or complaint I hear is, the speed study conducted by the city shows that 35 miles per hour is the average speed. There doesn't seem to be a speeding issue downtown. Why do you need two ways? Well, first, we have to agree that 35 miles an hour is an appropriate speed limit for a pedestrian-centric commercial district and neighborhood. I don't, I don't live in a neighborhood where the speed limit is 35 and most neighborhoods, the speed limit is 25 or below. Pedestrians are safest and most comfortable at 20 to 25 miles an hour, which is the more appropriate speed limit for the downtown and that's what the speed limit would be if we converted to two ways. Secondly, you have to consider and take into account how our one ways function and then you will understand why a 35 mile an hour average is very concerning. The one ways collect traffic at the red lights and then they flow the traffic down the street in batches. This initial batch is flowed down the street at 24 to 7, 24 to 27 miles an hour, 7 miles an hour below the speed limit. If you go 30, you will get stopped at the next red light. So, a good percentage of traffic is going 7 to 10 miles an hour under the speed limit. So, how do we get to a 35 mile an hour average? The cars that enter the system in the middle of the cycle can go 35 to 45 miles an hour and they often do, switching multiple lanes at a time and slingshoting down the street, picking up speed as they catch up to the pack. This is why you see the slower speeds in the downtown and why you see the faster speeds on the west side of downtown. Because by the time you get past Marquette and on your way to Division, you're wide open and you can go well over 45 miles an hour. So, this is extremely dangerous to both pedestrians and drivers in addition to being loud. Next question. Two ways will never be able to handle the traffic load. When the one ways were installed, there were over 30,000 cars a day traveling down in Third and Fourth Street each day. Today, 6,000 to 8,000 cars a day use Third Street and 8,000 to 11,000 cars use Fourth Street. That is about one-third of the amount of traffic that the downtown had when they, they were installed. This conversion plan has been studied by our internal traffic engineer, a third-party firm hired at the request of the city and another engineering firm hired by the DDP. And not a single one of them had a concern with this configuration and unequivocally, they agree that the two-way configuration has more than enough capacity to serve the traffic demands. The next question. Two ways won't work because of parking, deliveries, bus stops, Uber pickups, snow removal, et cetera. These are all typical problems that are not unique to our downtown. In fact, they are problems routinely solved and dealt with in every downtown across America. There is not a single one of these problems that can't be overcome in the engineering phase of this project. Multiple firms have evaluated the conversion and none of them have raised a flag that this can't be done. Next question. This plan will push a lot of cars to River Drive instead of Third and Fourth Street. Don't you want more cars downtown to support the businesses? The thing you need to realize about downtown is that cars cannot and do not spend money downtown. The downtown is a pedestrian-centric business district and neighborhood. Every downtown business customer has to get out of their car to spend money. Drive-throughs are not allowable in our downtown. We don't approve them, we only have one, it's grandfathered in, it's non-conforming. To increase business downtown, we need to have less cars and more pedestrians. Those cars weaving through the downtown at 35 and 45 miles per hour are focused on getting through the downtown as quickly as possible. 95% of those cars are not stopping and supporting downtown businesses. Those wishing to go through downtown as quickly as possible should stay on River Drive. River Drive is a road. The road is designed to move people from point A to point B as quickly as possible. Third and Fourth Street are streets. Streets are places where we build, build wealth in a city. Currently, they're designed to be high-traffic roads. The project is too expensive. This 1.7 million could be used for other street projects. In comparison to our peer cities, we are converting our one ways to two ways for much cheaper. Peoria, Cedar Rapids, and Des Moines are all at various points in the process of converting their one ways to two ways because they realize the financial importance of having a strong downtown. These three cities are all spending over $10 million to convert their one ways to two, two ways. In comparison, 1.7 million is pretty cheap, especially when you consider that 700,000 of that 1.7 is coming from the downtown business owners. These business owners assess themselves an extra tax to use to improve the downtown and these business owners have made two-way conversion a priority and they have put their money on the line to make it happen. So, the city is, is into this project for $1 million. Some of you say that is still too much and we can't afford it. I say we can't afford not to. There is a sentiment among a lot of people that I talk to who feel that the downtown is being propped up by the rest of the city. That is absolutely not true. The downtown is the most financially productive neighborhood in our city. The downtown is roughly 15 blocks by five blocks deep. In 2010, the assessed value on that land was $110 million. In 2021, the assessed value is $185 million. The downtown is the only land in the city where we can reasonably expect the assessed value to go up another $75 million in the next decade without adding any additional infrastructure to the network. This is because downtowns allow density, it allows tall buildings, it has a gridded street system, and it has fully-built-out infrastructure. Every development that happens in the downtown increases the tax base without increasing the long-term infrastructure liability. If the city of Davenport wants long-term financial sustainability, we need a thriving and growing downtown. That is why I say we can't afford not to invest this money in the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know the night's going a little long, so I'll try to be brief here. Everyone has talked a lot about why, what their reasons are for supporting the one ways or supporting the two ways. For me, it's, it's not really a public opinion question because safety is not a public opinion question. They've done the research, the experts agree on which option is safer. And I have a six-year-old who I adore, but she does not think before she acts, ever, I'm pretty sure. I actually, Kelly, I don't know if you know this, I threw up sitting next to you from some morning sickness. But, that, but that's why I ran for, for city council and ran for government was because I was crazy enough to start my family and start my political career at the same time because I wanted them to have a city that they wanted to grow up in, a place, an area that they wanted to think was cool and, you know, have them wanna come home after they go off to college. That was literally my thought process while still pregnant. And so, I'm excited to be able to take this vote and support the two-way conversion because it's really needed and I think that I'm... the two-way conversion because it's really needed. And I think that I can't really put it into better words because the conversation has been so played out. But I do want to say that even though public safety is not decided by public opinion, the people who are up here are decided by public opinion. And I think most people sitting up here, if not most people sitting in the audience, have already come to their conclusion. And I've heard sighs and groans about facts presented at this very evening. And I, you know, my kids are six and eight and I'm divorced at this point and, you know, I can't keep doing this forever. So I really hope that, you know, some of the fresh faces that we saw tonight will continue to be involved, get more involved, because we need more good policy in the city. And I hope that, you know, the next set of, you know, people coming in will, you know, continue that torch. But I'm really excited that I get to do this as, I think, will maybe be the most monumental part of my time on council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Alderman Jobin. Just a couple of quick questions. What is the posted speed limit for downtown? What is the, let me rephrase this. What is the posted speed limit downtown? And where is it posted? I don't need that answer today. You can get that for next week. I've heard a lot of talk about, this is about flood. Now, I'm pretty sure maybe I missed something here, but I thought we were raising, doing all that work at Third Street just to keep the street open and the traffic flow really wasn't a part of the problem. We could work it either way. So maybe by next week, we get that answered. Big concern, parking is going to be a huge concern. We don't know what we're going to do for parking. We don't know about loading zones. We haven't discussed where we're going to drop people off of the bus. We just going to drop them off in the middle lane, say you're on your own? We haven't talked about any of that. And I guess if I was a business owner, I would be concerned that I'm going to lose prime parking in front of my place of business. Is that going to be the next question we have? After we bring this back, we're going to say, oh geez, I didn't realize I was going to lose this parking. I can't do that. That is a concern. I think that should be something that should be right out in the forefront. Because it seems to me it wasn't all that long ago that we took all the parking meters out of downtown at a huge cost to the city of Davenport, well over $700,000 a year, which paid for the bond payments on the parking ramps that we had to find from somewhere else within the funds. And that was all to make parking downtown better, safer, more of it. And now it seems we're going to lose quite a bit of parking. So to me, that would be a huge concern. Third and Fourth, you know, River Drive, changing that intersection, we've got to change that. That's going to be a huge expense. It's just, you know, there's just a lot of unknowns here, you know, and I don't, I try to make my decisions on facts. I don't want to shake the little red, you know, the little black ball that, you know, you get an answer and ask it a question. I'd like to know what I'm actually getting. And that's what concerns me is because I don't know where the price tag with this is. We got an idea. We got an idea that it's a million seven. And, you know, some folks are putting some money in great. Now, if it's about, if it's about safety, if it's truly about safety, quite honestly, if I support this project or we support this project as a council, I don't want to take their money if it's about safety. Because if it's about safety, I'm not going to make, I'm not going to say I could take, make your neighborhood safer because you got money. But down here in the west end, we can't make that neighborhood safer because they don't have money. So if that truly is the issue, I don't want the money. We'll pay for it ourselves. That's a concern. We talk about, we talk about streets and making it safer, right? Well, usually when you make streets safer, they narrow the lanes. Well, we're not narrowing the lanes here. They're still going to be 12-foot lanes. I don't know that we're really going to slow the traffic down. That's yet to be seen. So I, to me, there's a lot of concerns, a lot of four-way stops and having left-hand turns. It's concerning. But at the end of the day, however we vote, if we vote this and this ends up being, doesn't work out the way we want it, I just want to make sure people realize that we did this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderman Cornet.
Hi. It's great to see all you people out here that have your concerns about which way the streets go. Wonderful listening to your, you know, stories and stuff. My look on this is that I'll definitely support downtown becoming residential and small-business area. I will not support it being a business area with all the privileges that comes with a residential area, you know. They, because the downtown development place, the people, they pay for some of the benefits that they get from the city. And they still get a lot of benefits that they don't pay for. We've spent millions of dollars making downtown the place you want to be. And I've read the papers and it's great that, you know, this is the number-one place to be for millennials. Great, great. Millennials grow up. They leave downtown. They want, they want a home. If we're going to make this a home for people, I think that, you know, make it a residential area with small businesses. Today, you go downtown, when I go drive through downtown, what do I see? I see bail bonds, bars, restaurants, and some entertainment areas. That'll bring people downtown, but it won't keep them there. This is an entire city. We're making a decision for the city, not downtown. In my opinion, the people in my ward do not want this to go through. We had 2,000 signatures up here saying that they didn't want it to go through. You know, the biggest complaints I hear about downtown are traffic, speeding. It's a drag strip, you know? We have basically nobody, our traffic department for the police department is defunct. You got a lieutenant, a sergeant, and two civilians. How are they supposed to keep us safe with traffic? We pulled our resources to combat crime, but we have not supported the people that we need to do traffic. Every day, I get a call from somebody saying, hey, people are speeding around my house. And, you know, I understand the situation that we're dealing with, but, you know, they don't know we don't have a traffic division anymore. We got two guys in speed trucks watching school zones, you know. I know that they have coordinated operations when they pull people from patrol to assist them, and they've been very successful. And the people have been very happy with those efforts, you know. They call me up and go, wow, man, you know, you know, speed's gone down a lot. Thank you, you know. But let's put some traffic people back on the road and maybe we can stop the drag strip. Maybe we can stop the racing up and down the streets, you know. If they won't let us do their job, you know, it's like, hey, you're just putting this whole thing forward. You're like, well, you know, this is unacceptable. This is unacceptable. No, hey, just let the traffic and the police do their job. Give them the opportunity to. You know, I'm glad that people want to walk around downtown. I'm glad that people are coming downtown. I think it's a wonderful thing. But you can't have everything your way while nobody else gets anything. So that's what I got to say. Sorry if I offended anybody.
Thank you, Alderman Cornet. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Jobin. I wanted to first add a couple of things, but, and I know this is going on, but it's a long discussion. I wanted to make sure everybody here understood the process. This is an ordinance change, and I'm looking at our attorney-warner. This is an ordinance change which typically requires three readings, which, that's three, two-week cycles. So this discussion, unless someone shortens it, there are ways, I guess, council can do that. But often, when it's a big discussion like this one, and this is an important one, we do go all cycles. We do have, this is the last, this and next week is the last cycle in August. And then there is, because there's a fifth Wednesday, we don't meet on those. So this will occupy possibly the other four weeks in September. So I want to make sure everybody understood that who's here tonight so that you can, you know, continue to participate in this process wherever you are on it. I did want to also share a couple of things. And every, you know, people who've spoken tonight have been very eloquent with their concerns and questions. And I don't know if these are, in an effort to answer some questions, I did reach out. Now, Ms. Gleason is not here tonight, and so I can't speak as well as she can about this. But there were some questions asked. I reached back out and asked about two things that had been discussed, which is where buses would be and also loading zones. She pointed, Department Head Gleason talked about that typically, which we do, and there are many buses on many narrow two-way streets right now. And the way that's dealt with is there is a, usually a no-parking from here to curb. It's all over the city this way. These would not be treated any differently. So that's a simple answer to a question that's been asked, but it's logical when you think of it because, again, we have buses that run on all kinds of streets right now, and that's how it's typically done. So there's an area, you know, that is protected. And we have that on our one-way streets right now, actually. And so where the buses pull in. So that's what I would imagine the answer to that would be. And then as far as loading zones, again, I asked this question earlier in the process and staff had asked this questions of cities that they were surveying. And the answer is, as Alderman Gribb had said, is that these do tend to resolve themselves. They didn't appear to be serious issues for other questions that our staff talked to, Cedar Rapids being a prime example. I don't think we will take it that lightly, for sure. And I know staff will be working hard and will be working anywhere in the city that we would be making a change like this, would be working with the folks impacted there. I'm not concerned about that. I know that the downtown is also talking about some reprogramming of alleys and looking how to do things like garbage pickup better because they can't have city garbage pickup. We require commercial containers and some alleys do it well and some don't do it well. And every alley is different. But, you know, alleys could also be a part of that as well. So I just, people had asked these questions, so I'm sharing the information that I've gotten about this. And I guess I wanted to also say, I want to thank everybody here and everyone who's concerned about this. I moved to Davenport 25 years ago. I don't live downtown. I live in a neighborhood, an old neighborhood, that I would hope that nowhere in Third Ward or anywhere else, any other neighborhood would go through the experience that my neighborhood did in terms of being vacant and abandoned. Blocks of houses at one point with no one living in them or one person with lights lit and that's it. I never want to see that happen anywhere. And, but it's a neighborhood I chose, in a neighborhood that I love and a neighborhood I will never leave. And so my experience as a newcomer to downtown was that it was rather a sad place at night particularly. But even as I went down and had to get a new social security card and was directed into the building that's now EICC, which was, the walls were covered, the glass was covered with dirt. It was, it looked abandoned. And I'm not afraid of things like that, but I've lived in different sized cities, really big cities, little tiny cities. I grew up in a town in 10,000, lived in Chicago, lived in Charlotte. So in a lot of different kind of neighborhoods. But it seemed very sad. And I was really, you know, and part of the work that I do is dealing with buildings that are abandoned and buildings that are, don't have any life left in them. And so I've seen this happen. I've seen this happen in my neighborhood. I've seen this happen in downtown. And I've seen it by that kind of investment. We have all kinds of people living downtown. It is still one of the poorest census tracts in the city despite all of this great investment, the census tract that it sits in. I applaud people for investing their dollars. And, but I also see it as, you know, it is a new neighborhood. And we know this. We know it's the fastest-growing neighborhood for all kinds of people, not just, you know, people with kids, single people. It does attract young people. I'm not getting any younger. I'm certainly not the target audience for this. So, and young people will come. Yes, perhaps they will move in to neighborhoods and buy a house. And I hope they will buy in our core neighborhoods, which we're working very hard on. But this is, this is the excitement of a downtown area, whether it's Davenport or Chicago or wherever it is, is something that I know attracts young people. And I don't believe that's going to change. We continue to have incredibly high rates of rental, so we don't have a lot of vacant. We do have much more vacant business space than I would like to see. I walk downtown a lot, and I'm telling you, there's a lot of empty spaces. It may be better than other cities in our area, but it is not good. And two-way, and one-way streets do not help that because people don't stop. This is, we want this to be a place that people will stop and that they will want to live, they will want to walk, they will want to purchase there. So, you know, I know this is a very difficult, has been a very difficult thing for many people, and I appreciate that. But, you know, as I look across all the research I've done, which I've done quite a bit, this is something that is happening across the country. And that's not why we should do it, just because it's happening across the country. But there's a reason why it's happening. There's a reason we would never put a one-way street in again anywhere. I think if all of us who live on two-ways, if somebody came to me tomorrow and said, we're going to make your street a one-way street, I don't think I'd be very thrilled about it. I don't think any of the rest of us would be. There's a reason for that. Downtown is a neighborhood, and I believe we need to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Alderwoman Jobin. I am going to save my, most of my comments for next week. I mean, it's after 7:30 and we're not even through the agenda yet. However, there's, I've been listening very carefully. I've spent a lot of time on the entire area from River Drive down to Telegraph on Third and Fourth. I've talked to people as I've, including businesses, as I've spent my time over there, going block by block. And I see this as a city project, and I've said this before, a city project that has a downtown component. I was one of the ones that thinks it was smart to look at it all the way to Telegraph because I think that's the most responsible and reasonable terminus for all this. I especially think it's the most safe because you're not going to have cars coming at you and having to make turns for Third, especially on Third. One of the things that I think is really important, we've been talking about downtown, downtown, downtown. But Third and Fourth is But Third and Fourth is one way all the way to Telegraph. And I think we have some wonderful neighborhoods that are not just downtown. And I think we've got neighborhoods that deserve some attention, particularly on the West End. In between the West End and downtown, you've got kind of a transition of industrial businesses, small businesses, and homes. So you've got this transition area. I think we need to look at this more than just downtown. I can see, I've listened, I think everyone has made very good points about the benefits that could get from going to two-ways. There's a lot of questions that have not been answered. I'm especially concerned about the River Drive and Third and Fourth, because that doesn't meet standards, and it's dangerous now, and you can't fix that with paint. I also think you cannot fix some, if we stop at Marquette or Division, you can't fix that with paint. We're going to have to do some more work if we do that. We got a technical report that provided information all the way from River Drive to Telegraph. But what I see before us now, and I don't know who made this decision or when, is River Drive to Marquette. And I think that is unfair to the people that are from Brown Street, which is where, looking at the traffic numbers, you start getting into those Western Ends, those other two areas of Third and Fourth Street. And I think whoever made that decision is not being fair to the people who live in the West End, because this whole thing was not only focused on downtown. When the city decided to take this on as a project, it may have started with the downtown-Davenport partnership. And I appreciate the money they're willing to put into it. But it became a city project with city staff, city time, city administrator having to work on this. And then all of a sudden, before us, we have a resolution that stops at Marquette, and it's downtown, downtown, downtown. I'm going to stop with that, because I've got more comments I want to do next week, and it's already quarter to eight, and we've got more agenda. But I wanted to make it clear that I may be the Eighth Ward Alderwoman, but I care about those neighborhoods that are, right now, I think, getting ignored. And I think that's why we got 3,000 signatures on petitions, because nobody bothered to go down and talk to them, find out what they want, and find out if there could indeed be benefits for that middle area and the West End. And that's how I feel about it. I will give more detailed comments next week, but I wanted to make sure that this didn't just get so overwhelmingly burdened with all the emphasis on downtown. I love the downtown, spend a lot of time there, okay? Even though I live in Eighth Ward, I do a lot of stuff down there. But this is a full question from River Drive to Telegraph, and somebody made the decision to stop it at Marquette with this ordinance. And I don't know why, and I don't think it's fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Seeing no one, no one else, I'll take a crack at it and then pass it over to Mayor Mattson. To start, I'm one right now that's on the no fence. And I'm willing to let it at least get through the first cycle to continue discussion. So next week I will vote yes, but I'm on the no fence for, for those of you wonder why I'm going to do what I'm going to do next week. I do encourage all of my Sixth Ward residents to keep reaching out to me, right? I've heard from a lot of people, I want to hear from more. Majority of the people in the Sixth Ward have been telling me, Ben, don't do it, all right? I have, I will acknowledge that I've heard from a good major, or not a good majority, a good amount of people more recently within the Sixth Ward that, you know, are opponents of, or proponents, I'm sorry, I'm stumbling on my words, for this. A lot of you are sitting in the room this evening, all right? And so I thank you for that. And again, I ask anyone who wants to share their opinion with me to call me, write me, and, and go from there, so we can continue this discussion. Couple of things I hope that are a little unique from my perspective. You know, the $1.7 million and to Marquette, from my understanding, that's what has been in the six-year CIP. Been in there since, since, you know, I've been on council for a term and a half almost now. This past January, when we had our CIP budget work session, I, or Alderman Dunn may have been the first one to kind of pose a question about that. So you can blame one of the two of us for probably where we are, where we are today. A few weeks ago, staff presented to us a concept plan within that $1.7 million budget. You know, and things to consider in that $1.7 million budget is that that does include a terminus at Marquette Street, right? To go to Division Street, it's going to be an extra approximately $500,000, if I remember that. To go to Telegraph is going to be another $1.2 million. So for those of you asking, "I don't know how much this is going to cost," we've been given some information about how much those types of things might cost. Another thing is that within this $1.7 million concept plan includes, I apologize now, four or five intersections on each Third and Fourth Street that are controlled by four-way stops, right? Information I believe I received that other members on the council received is that to convert an intersection, a three-way lighted intersection, what they are now, to a four-way lighted intersection, that's about $120,000 extra. So on Third and Fourth Street at Main, for those of us who have concern about Main, Third and Fourth Street being four-way stop signs, we're looking at an additional quarter of a million dollars. So you can see the budget ballooning from here if we're going to look to do this right. I do have significant concern about the safety of terminating at Marquette Street. I think we at least need to go to Division, and I would definitely be up for Telegraph, knowing that, you know, with the railroad and the budget, you know, there are some issues there. But I'm a really hard no at Marquette Street, even more so with four-way stops at Main, Third, and Fourth. That's, that's where I am. You know, I acknowledge that one of the biggest issues for those that reside downtown is that drag race, and I've witnessed it. I've been downtown, you know, at night, you know, seen it. It's annoying, it happens on Brady Street and all those, so don't condone it. I would ask our police department, knowing you're stretched thin, and we ask a whole lot of you, continue to just do your best to try and enforce the laws, enforce the laws down there. One of my perspectives is that I don't think people drive through downtown as much anymore as they drive to it, right? I think going downtown is now purposeful. Our community has expanded north and east so far, you know, veterans out to, out to Bettendorf, you know, the great Sixth Ward. I mean, look at that corridor, 53rd Street, Elmore, Utica Ridge, boom. You know, there are probably those that want to run the one-ways that are, that are trolling around, wasting gas, being a nuisance to everybody, we can all, all agree on that. But I, I think a majority of the people that are downtown, driving there, going there, are purposeful, and you're not getting a whole meandering of that. So I struggle with, do we want to really take the, the car component of getting people there? Because me personally, I'm not taking Uber, I'm not, I'm not taking that convenience tax. I'm not taking the bus, I'm not walking there, I'm not riding my bike, all those types of things. So just philosophically, conceptually, for those that, that work and want there to be a thriving downtown, I mean, you know, that's the model. I get, you know, your perspective. I enjoy the unique atmosphere that downtown brings. As was mentioned, I think either by Alderman Condon or Alderman Grip, we do have very distinct areas within, within our city of Davenport. And, you know, I view downtown as kind of that big city atmosphere, right? I can go down, watch a cool show at the Adler, I can go to Modern Woodman Park, I can hit up some great restaurants downtown like Armor Gardens, shout out Mr. Bush. And I've got about 100 reasons why I want to go there, you know, those types of things. And so, you know, I view the Village of East Davenport as kind of more of that quaint, walkable area. And so that's philosophically where some of my brain is and where I go with that. I have some of these issues, I acknowledge issues that those that reside downtown, that work downtown have as well. And I'm still going to consider myself open-minded through this process, even though right now I am a no. So, you know, hopefully I'm not too much of a spineless politician going, going back and forth in this, so, so bear with me. I had one more point, I lost it, I think I'll leave it till next Wednesday. I'm done. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin, for letting me talk. I appreciate it. Excuse me, everybody that came, everybody talked, the great dialogue between council folks, the city staff, taking their time over many, many months, other people that have went to all the work sessions, as Alderman Condon said, all the public inputs, there had, we're talking about two streets, and the amount of effort that we're spending on this, this, this city, quite frankly, kicks, you know what, on, sets the best budget ever, right? Six accredited departments, but we're going to spend, you know, hours and hours, quite frankly, years and years. People know, except my colleague down to my far-left, Mr. Dunn. We've been involved in this a long time, and a lot of people have been talking about it, and a lot of councils have passed this on, a lot of issues have been passed on, but like the flood, 1965, my father talked about, I talked about that. This two-way discussion, a lot of people talked about this, I love what this council does, what the cities do. We take it on, so we're taking this on. I'm asking, don't table this, let's vote this and get this done, right? But things to think about, and people talked about the traffic, and we won't be able to get around. And I stood outside, I was with my good friend Alderwoman McGinnis last night, and a couple other people that are here. There will be, people say you can't get around if we do this. Five lanes in each direction from Fourth to River Drive. Fourth, Third, Second, River Drive, five lanes. And tell me where else that is, okay? You're going to have that to get across, if you so inclined that that's your thing to get across. That's a big deal. We're resurfacing Third and Fourth. That's why this issue is going to happen now, okay? We're doing the streets. It's like when we talk about, and we used to in this city, tear up a street and not mess with the sewer. Then the sewer break, have to tear up the street after we just fixed the street. So we're resurfacing Third and Fourth. So if we're going to do this, this is the time. I'd be probably against if we vote this no, and someone then says, and we resurface Third and Fourth, and then we come back and say, "Let's do it later," or a year or two. So if you're going to do it, I think this is the time. Now, again, six accredited Division staff is really good, some of you talked about it, so I'll just say this, the issues of loading zone buses, things like that, we do a lot of things in the city, we can probably handle those things, okay? Yeah, some people might be prepared, we might have to have a little negotiation on where those go, but those things can be handled, because we do that stuff, the staff does it pretty good, if that happens, right? So I've been, grew up here as a kid, I've talked about it before, you know, there was a burning dag gum landfill in this downtown years ago. Now there isn't, okay? There, this thing is, this thing is downtown that people want to go to. I understand Ward representatives' concerns. I was, for people who don't know, an Eighth Ward Alderman and a Seventh Ward Alderman, I get it. But this is the place, and you, I've learned to evolve, I've learned to understand, I've learned to look out. This is the place we do stuff. So if we're going to do this, we need to do it now. And I think it's a pretty important thing to think about evolving, growing, prosper. Downtown's doing great, the council's been wonderful in providing money and helping out and doing it. But at the end of the day, we, if we have some issues, we can, we can tackle those. And remember, we want to, we want to be safe, stable, and welcoming. This will help with that, okay? So those are my things, thanks for talking. There'll be more to follow. Remember, the vote, first vote's next week, there's two more after that if this keeps going. So, thank you.
Would make a motion, we just take a five to 10-minute recess, allow people to clear out and clear out other parts.
Yeah, we'll just, 10-minute, we don't need a motion, 10-minute break.
If the line gets too long, you guys can come use my restroom.
Three minutes, three minutes. Cause they could, and it was, they treated listed like, cause you, you know, just second-class citizens, it was. Oh, the fraternization or the? Yeah, yours, officer. You, you cannot afford to, that's right, you can't, that's exactly right, yeah, I have to give you orders to maybe go do that, you can't, there can't be this, well, we're friends, I'm not gonna do it thing. One minute, let's get back to our spots. I know you don't wanna get, like, here for another three hours, so. Of course, people who remember the 11 o'clock council meetings back in the day, so. Not sure where everybody is, but we're starting in five seconds. Aye, Mr. Jobson, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I'm stunned by all the chairs I see now, I don't, don't know how to react, and so, we're back to the public safety agenda, moving on to item number four, resolution approving street, lane, or public ground closures on the listed dates and times to hold outdoor events, I'll read all of these and then ask for comment. First, Tim Shea, Belcourt Labor Day Block Party, Sunday, September 4th, 2022, 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, closure, Belcourt, from East 61st Street to Parkview Lane. Next, Davenport Community School District, West High School Homecoming Parade, 3505 West Locust Street, Thursday, September 8th, 2022, 4:30 PM to 7:00 PM, closures, police-controlled, West 18th Street from North Clark Street to North Elsie Avenue, North Elsie Avenue from West 18th Street to West Lombard Street, West Lombard Street from North Elsie Avenue to North Nevada Avenue, North Nevada Avenue from West Lombard Street, south to West High School. Next, Quad City River Bandits, Race to Home 5K Downtown, Saturday, October 8th, 2022, 8:30 AM to 9:30 AM, closures, 8:30 AM to 9:15 AM, Second Street from Western Avenue to Centennial Bridge slash Gaines Street, 8:30 AM to 9:30 AM, Easternmost Northbound Lane on the Centennial Bridge. And last, Scott County Family Y, 36th Annual Turkey Trot, 6:30, East Fourth Street, Thursday, November 24th, 2022, 5:00 AM to 11:00 AM, closures, Fourth Street from River Drive to Main Street, Main Street from Fourth Street to Lombard Street, Lombard Street from Harrison Street to Brady Street, Westernmost Lane on Brady Street from Lombard Street to Central Park Avenue, Southernmost Lane on Central Park Avenue from Brady Street to Harrison Street, excuse me, Easternmost Lane on Harrison Street between Central Park Avenue and Lombard Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on those items? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing no more, we'll move on. Item number five, excuse me, motion approving noise variance requests for outdoor events on the listed dates and times. Again, I'll read all of these before asking for comment. First, Mississippi Valley Fair, banned after World of Outlaw races, 2815 West Locust Street, Friday, August 26th, 2022, 9:00 PM to 12:00 AM, outdoor music over 50 dB. Next, Tim Shea, Belcourt Labor Day Block Party, Sunday, September 4th, 2022, 11:30 AM to 8:00 PM, outdoor music banned over 50 dB. Next, J.C.'s of the Quad Cities, Barbecue C, Leclerc Park, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Friday, September 9th, 2022, and 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Saturday, September 10th, 2022, outdoor music banned over 50 dB. Anyone from public wishing to comment on those items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that'll move on. Item number six, motion approving beer and liquor license applications, I will read those under the new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location transfer, et cetera. First is Hy-Vee Market Cafe, 2200 West Kimberly Road, premises update to include entire store, license type, class C liquor. And before we move on, I was informed that the petitioner had asked to table this item indefinitely, and we'll come back with another plan, and that would also include the same stores under Ward Four at 2351 West Locust, as well as Ward Six, 4064 East 53rd Street, am I correct on that? So therefore, do I have to make a motion to?
You could ask for a motion to table until staff determines it's ready to come back.
Cue card held highly.
So moved, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will table those items. Next, alternating, alternating current fest, alternating currents festival, 320 North Main Street, temporary event, August 18th to 20th, license type, class B beer, please note to be voted on later on this agenda. Next, alternating currents festival, 115 East Third Street, temporary outdoor event, August 18th to 20th, license type, class B beer, again, to be voted on later on in this agenda. Next, Stomp Box Brewing, 210 East River Drive, number 101, temporary extended outdoor area, alternating currents festival, August 18th to 20th, license type, class C liquor, again, to be voted on later on this agenda. Next, Thunder Bay Grill, Riverfront Pops, 400 Byderbeck Drive, temporary outdoor event, August 18th to 21st, license type, beer/wine, again, to be voted on later on this agenda. Next, we have J.C.'s of the Quad City, 400 Byderbeck Drive, temporary outdoor event, September 9th through 10th, license type, class B beer. Next is St. Anthony Church of Davenport, 417 North Main Street, temporary event with outdoor area, September 11th, license type, class B beer. Next, we have Mississippi Valley Blues Fest, 400 Byderbeck Drive, recurring temporary outdoor event, September 15th through 18th, license type, class B beer. Next, we have Players, 2218 East 11th Street, outdoor area, license type, class C liquor. And then, below, we have items under letter B, annual license renewals, will not read those, is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
All right, I move item number three be placed on discussion, that the tabled items be tabled, that the items to be voted on later on the agenda be later, voted on later, and everything else to consent, so moved.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very well done, appreciate it, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Alderman Jobson and Alderwoman Dickman, next area to discuss is public works, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly to discuss, Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor, item number one is a resolution accepting work completed under the 2021 Crackin' Seat Program by Hawkeye Pavilion Corporation of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $780,848.66. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council, seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under the West 54th Street Reconstruction Project by Five Cities Construction Company of Cove Valley, Illinois, in the amount of $342,308.39. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council, seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under the Black Hawk Creek Stabilization Project by Five Cities Construction Company of Cove Valley, Illinois, in the amount of $477,562.45. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council, seeing none, this item will move on, and then I'll read items four through nine and then ask for comment. Item number four is a resolution assessing the cost of boarding up buildings at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number five is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots, tracts of real estate. Item number six is a resolution assessing the cost of condemned property demolitions at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number seven is a resolution assessing the cost of tree removal at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number eight is a resolution assessing the cost of weed cutting at various lots, tracts of real estate, and item number nine is a resolution assessing the cost of nuisance abatement, environmental cleanups at 2109 West 68th Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address any of those items? Council, seeing none of them, items will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution awarding a contract for the 2022 commercial alley resurfacing to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of $226,637.85. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council, seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a motion awarding a contract for the replacement of oil and grease analyzer system at the water pollution control plant to Bi-Tag LLC of Charlotte, North Carolina, in the amount of $54,210. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council, seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a motion awarding a blanket contract for the purchase of anti-icing chemicals for the 2022/23 winter season, Ocean Incorporated of Davenport, Iowa, as a primary supplier, and SNI Solutions of Geneseo, Illinois, as the backup supplier. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council, seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 13 is a motion awarding a blanket contract for the purchase of calcium chloride for the 2022/23 winter season to Jericho Services of Indianola, Iowa, as a primary supplier, and Silico LTD of Hiddenstale, Illinois, and Ocean Incorporated of Davenport, Iowa, as backup suppliers. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council, seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 14 is a motion considering a waiver, temporary deferral of sidewalk installation as a future site of the Fair Oaks Food at 2951 Enterprise Way. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council, seeing none, this item will move on, and Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Thank you, sir, I would like to set all 14 items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion on second, all in favor? Say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and the agenda is set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you Alderman Condon, I'm sorry, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly, now, last area, finance, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet, Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, three items on finance, item number one is a resolution accepting the 2022/23 year, three of three AmeriCorp's program grant from the Corporation of National and Community Services in the amount of $541,862, and authorizing the finance director or designate to sign the grant agreement to be managed and implemented by the Davenport Parks and Recreation Department. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number one? Council, that'll move on. Item number two is a resolution establishing the date and times for the annual Halloween parade and trick-or-treating as Sunday, October 30th, 2022, at 2:00 PM, and Monday, October 31st, 2022, 5:30 PM from, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM respectively. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number two? Council. And finally, item number three is a motion awarding a contract for the Emys Bunker renovation Phase Three project to Larry Denton Golf Course Construction and Renovation of Taylor Ridge, Illinois, in the amount of $85,756.75. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number three? Council, that will move on as well. Below on our agenda, we have purchases from 10,000 to 50,000, we don't read each of those individually, but they are listed there for your information. Alderman Cornet, would you please set our agenda?
I move that all three items be placed on the consent agenda.
So motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes finance, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet, next area is, is there any other items under ordinances, resolutions, motions? There is, but first we must make a motion for suspension of the rules, so is there a motion for suspend? Motion in the sus, second for suspension of the rules, Brian, please call the roll for suspension.
Cornet. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank you. Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Jobson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
And Grip?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Very good, the rules are suspended, so now I'll read the motion. Motion approving beer and liquor license applications, I'll read them all and then ask for public comment. New license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary area, et cetera. Ward, all in Ward Three. Alternating Currents Festival, Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce, 320 North Main Street, temporary event, August 18th to 20th, license type B. Alternating Currents Festival, Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce, 115 East Third Street, temporary outdoor event, August 18th to 20th, license type B. Stomp Box Brewing, 210 East River Drive, number 101, temporary extended outdoor area, Altering Currents Festival, August 18th to 20th, license type C. Number four, Thunder Bay Grill, Riverfront Pops, Thunder Bay Grill, 400 Byderbeck Drive, temporary outdoor event, August 18th to 21st, license type B and beer and wine. Is there any public with comment? You know the rules.
Dale Gilmore, Sixth Ward, I was gonna look into this, but obviously I had something else I wanted to talk about tonight, and I'm not gonna talk about that, but if I remember right, and if somebody wanted to look into the notes, this all came up last year, like two days before the event, and last year we had to suspend the rules so they could do it, and I remember one Alderman, and I won't say who it was, said, these people need to be reminded that they need to get these, these applications and these permits in on time, and I, I, personally, if I was sitting where one of you's sitting, I would vote no, I would say, you know what, you were warned last year, you pulled a last-second deal on us and we let you slide by, but we're not going to anymore.
Anyone else? Okay, anyone from council? I'm sorry, will Alderman please move the motion? Motion in second, now, any Alder folks, Alderman Jobson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if that was me, if that was me, Mr. Gilmore, I guess I don't remember, it might have been, but I'm, as one of the people that's probably more lenient with, with suspension of the rules, I would ask our city administrator, administrator, please remind us if this does happen next year, you know, I, I won't warn Johnny to use green words anymore, we'll tell Johnny what's happening next year, I, I will probably let this one slide this year.
Okay, um, thank you Alderman Jobson, Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much, Mayor, my policy is, if it's purely for convenience, and if they know better, I'm not going to support a suspension of the rules. I usually vote for the project or whatever they wanna do, but I really think they need to get their acting gear, and I, I've done that for years, I've been very consistent, as a matter of fact, I didn't do it for a constituent that just forgot, because I said my policy is no, and it will continue to be no, so, thank you.
Thank you Alderwoman Lee, Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor, I think we as a council and the mayor made that clear yesterday, that they need to get their act together, so.
Thank you Alderman Dunn, anyone else? Okay, Brian, please call the roll on the motion.
Dickman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Jobson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Cornet? Ortiz?
Yes.
Ann Kelly?
Yes.
Uh, nine yeses and one no, Your Honor?
Very good, those four items move, pass, the motion passes. Next item, is there any public with business? Seeing none, are there any more reports? Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, that was enthusiastic, all in favor. Any opposed? Did I hear some? No. Have a good weekend, go downtown and enjoy stuff.